On record.
Good evening, welcome to the City of Lincoln City Special Meeting, Wednesday, July 18th, 2018, 5:30 PM. If you wish to speak on an agenda or non-agenda item, please sign up at the sheet near the entrance door to council chambers. You'll be called to speak during the public comments section. Comments or testimonies on agenda items listed under public hearing, public comment will be taken at that time. I don't have that even listed here, but I've said it, so if somebody shows up and wants to say something, I'm going to give them that opportunity. We'll start with the roll call. Yeah, I guess, roll call. Kathy?
Don Williams. Dick Anderson. Excuse Riley Hoagland. Should be on his way. Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Judy Casper.
Here.
Susan Walke.
Here.
Thank you, and because this is a special meeting, we'll waive the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll also waive requirement to get the councillor's permission to speak, so we're going to just talk unless it gets out of hand, and I'm going to turn this over to Ron. We're going to be talking about the status report on the proposed police building.
Okay, thank you for coming on a Wednesday night. This is not a normal evening, but we appreciate you coming. We wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to bring you up to date on the proposed police building, where we are as far as the estimated cost of that building, where we will go, and ultimately, looking towards a groundbreaking. We have, of course, me and Debbie and Chief Palmer, who are here representing the city. We also have representatives from FFA Architecture. Ian is online. Can you hear us okay, Ian?
I can hear you. The council is a little bit faint, but I'll do my best.
Okay. And I'll, we have representatives from Cloche Group and Emmerich, and I'll let these gentlemen introduce themselves, and then we'll just jump right in.
Start at the left, please.
Oh, sorry. Jordan Fell and the Special Projects Director for Emmerich Construction.
David Dwyer, Project Manager for Cloche Group.
Jerry Palmer, Chief of Police.
Thank you, welcome.
Okay, so, the last time that we discussed the building and the, well, let me give you a, just, I want to just do a little bit of history to just bring us up to speed. If you recall back in February, we had an initial discussion about the building and the estimated costs, and that was, discussion was based upon a needs analysis that we had done several years ago. That building was projected to be 24,000 square feet, had a budget of about $14.5 million. During that meeting, there was a great deal of discussion about where we should end up, and the council established a budget of $10.5 million with the possibility of raising that in the future if needs be, and then, of course, staff would come with some proposals on where that money could come from, and also, discussion on any changes to the building. The third thing that came out of that discussion was to reduce the size of the building from 24,000 square feet to 18,000 square feet. So that was done immediately, and FFA had presented how that would be. We did not lose things that, aspects of the building, they were reduced in size and shifted around and so forth. Since that time, we have been, there's a few things that have happened. One is bringing Emmerich on board, bringing David Dwyer with Cloche fully on board, and then looking at all of the costs associated with the building so that we could come up with a reduced price on the cost of that. Now, what we're here to do tonight, and we asked to have a special meeting instead of a work meeting, so that we can get your approval to, and that is to move forward with a budget that we will be recommending to you. The other thing is that in bringing these partners on board, we also approved going through the CMGC, the Construction Manager, General Contractor bid process, and part of that includes obtaining a guaranteed maximum price for which the Emmerich will have to, will have to live by. They can go under, of course, but they cannot go over that cost. That usually happens at about 95 percent, or 90 to 95 percent of the, of the design drawings being completed. And Ian, we are at about what percentage now on the, on the design?
Of the overall building design package, I would say that we're somewhere between 75 and 80 percent. We're in the middle of developing all the details and things that Jordan will need to base the estimate on and bid the project.
So we're moving forward, we're getting close to that point where Emmerich will give us a guaranteed maximum price. So, the amount tonight is not the guaranteed maximum price the world present to you, it is the, it's, it's, it's the budget to which FFA, the architecture, will design the building to, okay? So when the building size was reduced, that dropped the cost down to about $13.5 million, okay? Still significantly above the price that we were, we were targeting. With the, with the work that FFA, Cloche, Chief Palmer, and, and Emmerich have been doing, we've been able to bring that estimated price down to about $2.5 million, or $12.5 million, sorry. Two and a half.
We'll buy it.
So, in 1990, no, 2000, I built a rec center for $2.5 million. That must be what has just stuck in my mind. But anyways, so, so we wanted to go through with you and cover some of the big items of where we saw the biggest cuts. There's lots of cuts that come in at 5,000, 10,000, 20,000. Those ones, we were not planning on going over with you, but instead, we wanted to make sure that we went over the, the big ticket item, so you can see how we came to this, 12.5 million. And then Debbie and I will talk in more detail about where the funding can come from this. My wonderful job is to introduce things. If you have questions that I can't answer, I will be turning to all of the experts that are to my right. So, up on the screen, you have three pictures. You have the, the site plan for the, the building. This is based on the reduced size. And then you have the front and back renderings of the building, and those ones were the ones that you had seen in your previous meeting. The first thing that we looked at doing, and this had the, the biggest impact, saved about, looking, somewhere around a half a million dollars. And remember, we're looking at about a million dollars to get us from the 13.5 to the 12.5, is that we pulled out the demolition of the, of the old building. That, that would be deferred until a later date. That sees cost savings in the demolition costs. It sees cost savings in the parking, because you would end up reducing some of the parking for a later date. Ian, I'm highlighting where the existing building is, and you can see that when that was torn down, you had parking that was created in this area. That parking would not be able to be done until a later date. And then, the third thing is that it would save on is that the building would be completed quicker. We had been looking at a 16 month, 18 month.
18, originally.
This could drop this down as far as a year of construction time. And that, and all total, by waiting on that would save about a half a million dollars.
You're saying this could be built in six months?
No.
Twelve months.
Twelve months from groundbreaking.
Eighteen, okay, so, okay. I thought you said it'd save a year from eighteen.
No, the construction of the new structure would take a year. And then, we had six months to phase out demolition of the existing building and build that parking lot.
But that's still going to have to happen.
Eventually. But it does not have to happen in order for the new building to become operational. The second, any other questions pertaining to just the demolition? We've, we've had a lot of joking about this since we started talking about this. We concluded we could turn it into a VRD and rent, rent out the jail spaces, or it could make a new great scared straight program where you can bring kids in there. And I mean, we've had a lot of fun joking, but the real, the, you know, the bottom line of it is that for the time being, it would save us about a half a million dollars on these construction costs.
I do have a question for that, or an idea for that building before it's demolished, is what about homeless? A homeless shelter?
That is actually one of the discussions that we have had, but it's only been on the most preliminary basis. We have not really discussed it in full, in full.
It would probably take some re. You don't like that idea?
Mr. Chenly?
Yes.
Could you show us on that site plan map where the existing building is?
It's right there.
Oh, okay.
Right in the center of that highlighted area. This is the new building. It's intended so that the, you drive into Sally Point here, Port, and you'd be able to come out. This is the covered, or this is the parking that would be in the back for the, the secure parking for the police.
How many spaces does that give you?
Ian, do you know how many spaces that we would, is it just losing, Mayor?
If you leave the existing building and go with this, how many do you lose, you gain? What's your?
How many spaces do we lose by leaving the existing building there?
We lose quite a few, because basically, the drive aisle that you're seeing adjacent to the existing building, or the stalls adjacent to the existing building, wouldn't really be functional just because of their proximity and the way that we have to grade that area. And then, in addition to that, the preliminary thinking we've had is that in the short term, that actually stays just kind of as a gravel pad back there that can be used for parking. You could extend all the way around the building, but we're going to lose a significant amount until that time that the existing building can go away.
And Chief, where does that work out for you in your secured parking? How does that work out?
It definitely presents a challenge for us. I mean, the idea behind the secured parking was not only to be able to park our patrol vehicles back there, but also have secured area for our employees to bring their personal vehicles in and that sort of stuff. Over the course of the construction, we will probably designate as many vehicles as we can as take-home vehicles and alternate them between shifts, depending on who's working, to try to minimize that impact. But we still would have private vehicles there. We may be able to work that out with families to be able to drop their employees off, and I know that, but it does, it does impact us, not, not being able to have that parking.
Do you have an idea how many spaces you'd be giving up?
I haven't really got a chance to study this latest diagram, but I think we're at least going to be kind of where we are right now as far as, we'll probably have enough room back there to park our patrol cars, but I don't anticipate looking at that. We're going to have much room for private vehicle.
Just from the diagram, and I think this is probably on the low end, it looks like about 10 spaces, but that doesn't account for what we just heard from Ian as far as getting around it and so forth. Okay. The, the next item that I wanted to, to mention, and it's one that you have talked about before, the original concept design had covered parking for the police vehicles in this area. That has been, is proposed to be eliminated or deferred until a later date. That would save about $150,000 doing that. Okay. The next item that we looked at is landscaping, and we have estimated that there could be somewhere around a $300,000 savings on landscaping if we limited the landscaping at this point to the entrance of the building, and then dealt with the landscaping both around it and as it's associated with the back parking lot to another, to another time. Right now, we've estimated that the, the savings for eliminating, except around the entrance, would be about $225,000. In talking with Emmerich, I'm sorry, with Cloche Group, we think we can get about an additional $75,000 out of that. And then, there's about a $44,000 savings in the landscaping that's associated with the back of the property.
We were going to spend $300,000 on landscaping?
That was part of the budget, yes, sir.
Yeah, initially, it cost quite a bit before they take off, but, so what, so if you're, so let me start backwards. One of the, one of the things that we talked about for this particular building is to have it friendly and welcoming, and because we don't just have criminal types that are going there, we have people in need, distress, worry about something happening. And so, if we're, what is going to be in the place of the landscaping then, and what landscaping would be there if you're?
So Ian, the question that was, was posed by Councillor Hinton is that if you're not doing the landscaping, what is there? And how does that affect the friendliness and the welcoming nature of the building?
So, it's not that we're eliminating landscaping in its entirety. What we're doing is focusing the landscaping on the front door, where people are, the general public is coming to the building. So, Ron, if you could gesture for me on the site plan, the area that, where we have the ramp, just in front of the, the front door, that's the area that we're going to focus our, our time and particularly, our money, which is really about bringing water off the hillside and around the building, and then off the roof and down, which is part of that concept that we talked about initially. In addition, there might be some additional landscape elements right next to the public parking, which is just to the south. That would be where we might include our flagpoles and things like that for, for the building. And so, the, the areas that are outside of that would then end up basically just being grass seed. So there's still lawn, there's still, I mean, it's not like we're leaving you dirt. We're still planning on providing plantings in those areas, it's just not to the level that we're focusing on in the front.
The, the remainder of the items bring us up to about a million dollars in, or bring us up to a little more than a million dollars in savings. But they, like I said, they're, the lowest one comes in at $1,500, the highest one comes in at $97,000, and there, and I was not planning on going through those in detail unless you're interested in their, they pertain to seals on, on windows and, and that kind of stuff. So, if you're okay, I wasn't planning on going there, because if that's okay with you, or if you want us to go there, I can.
Could you get us a copy of that? I'm interested in all that detail, because I, sometimes, that can make the difference between what we were envisioning and what we're getting. Some of it won't matter.
Okay. With those reductions, then, that puts us at a new estimate of $12,495,426. Still $2 million over, over the 10.5 million budget that you had set. Now, I broke down, or these guys broke down and gave to me, the, the costs by categories. At this point, the construction cost for that 12.5 million dollars is $9,287,661. Utility costs are $25,000. Furniture fixtures and equipment is $717,877. Professional fees and expenses is $1,539,301, and a contingency of $925,587, totaling now $12,495,426.
If I may interrupt for a moment, just for the record, Councillor Hoagland has joined us.
Now, let me take a step back and talk a little bit as a reminder of the 10.5 million dollars and where that came from. The 10.5 million dollars is based upon our capacity to, for debt. And the revenue source is the TRT funds through the Capital Facilities Fund. And with the, with the projected amount that we have, we felt we could safely go into debt for 10.5 million dollars without depleting that fund so far that it would either affect some capital projects, or more importantly, would, would not be available if there was a downturn in the economy. So, we have, we have stuck to the idea that we only want to go into debt for 10.5 million dollars to do, otherwise, we do not think would be a wise thing to do. So that leaves us with $2 million, the $2 million that we would be trying to, to make up. Now, the other reason why we looked at, at the, limiting the debt is that you're paying, it's a 30-year loan that you're going to be paying on for a building that hopefully outlasts that 30 years. But for things like furniture, fixtures, and equipment, you're going to be replacing that before the 30 years is over. And so, part of what we looked at is what are the expenses that depreciate at a much faster rate than the building itself, and do we have the ability to pay for those without going into debt for those? So, we looked at some additional ways in which we could bring a savings or to make up the, the $2 million that we were looking at. And I've already mentioned one. We felt that we could squeeze another $75,000 out of the landscaping budget. The second item is for city permitting costs. There's two parts when you look at our permitting costs. These are the permits that we issue. There is the, the amount we pay to the building inspector for plan checks, building inspections, that would continue. But there's also a 20 percent fee that we charge for administration on top of that. If we were to waive or defer that cost, that would be about $35,000. We also have SDC charges that are built into the budget of $139,270. So the question is that we would be bringing back to you is the deferral of those SDC charges. We also looked again at our fund balances, and we looked at two on where we thought we might be able to pull funds. One of those is the general fund, which we think we can pull from that. That, right now, is at about $2.2 million. If we were to use $700,000 of that, that still leaves us with essentially a contingency of $1.5 million for this fiscal year. And then, the other is the Capital Facilities Fund. That is just above $900,000 in its fund balance. We looked at the idea of taking $400,000 out of that. That, we felt, could still give us a buffer that would be able to, to help us in that. I'm going to do something real quick, if you don't mind. I'm going to go ahead and bring up some detail on this, so you can see these easier. These are the other items, Councillor, that we had talked about, that would be less. These are the costs for the construction breakdown that I had mentioned earlier, that bring us up to the 12.5 million dollars. Ian, what I'm doing is just showing a breakdown of the costs that I've been describing. These are the possible additional savings. As I mentioned, $75,000 in landscaping, $34,000, just under, just under $35,000 for the city permitting, $139,270 for the SDC charges, $400,000, which are funds that would be added into, that we, of $400,000 in the Capital Facilities Fund, and $700,000 from the, the general fund. Then we looked at, then we looked at the FFNE. As we've discussed, the building's going to take, under this scenario, about a year to build, which means that the real FFNE costs associated with this would be coming after the next fiscal year. And so, the question we asked ourselves is can we, can we delay these costs until next year and then, and then budget the, the funds in for the FFNE costs? So, what, and then the other thing that we looked at is if needed, we had $200,000 in our budget for projects, the signed entrance improvement and a parking lot resurfacing. That could be delayed if we, if we felt we needed to take that even farther. So the next step that we looked at was, how do we defer the, or how do we come up with the money for the FFNE, the $717,000? The final guaranteed maximum price could be less than the $12.5 million. We won't know that until we get closer to that. That's where Cloche becomes really important, is they keep pushing these guys as our owner's rep. There is a contingency of $925,587. We are not proposing any changes in the contingency, but, but the, if any savings we get where we don't use that contingency could then go towards the, the FFNE costs. If we come in under budget, that we have built in a clause that there is a split with us and Emmerich of 50 percent of the savings that's budgeted into this. And then finally, I went through our budget this year and looked for one-time expenditures that have ongoing sources of revenue, and I identified $2,545,800. Those are projects that will be begun and finished in this year, but the revenue sources are ones that carry from year to year. Now, we're not asking to you to make any budget decisions for next year. Those, of course, would be weighed against the priorities, but it's more to illustrate that between all of these, we think we can be able to budget for the FFNE for next year and not have to, and not have to try to bond for that this year. So, questions?
I have one. So are you saying that the FFNE could come out of this particular fund?
I'm saying that the-
Next year? I mean, is that, is that an idea?
It's many, it's many funds. It's not just one. It includes the general fund, the Capital Facilities Fund, no, not the Capital Facilities, the general fund and the street capital fund.
But what you're saying is these aren't ongoing costs-
Exactly.
-to us this year, but, I mean, they are this year, but next year, they won't be.
Exactly. As an example, if you look here, we had $500,000 for a centrifuge, okay? That's a one-time expense, but the revenues are ongoing sources of revenue. And so, another good example is that we have budgeted this year $150,000 for consultants for two planning projects, three planning projects. Those will be done by June 2019, and we don't have any planning projects for those in the future, so that frees up those funds that are available. So all total, it was, it was about $2.5 million that are one-time expenses in this year's budget. Okay?
Question, and I'm sorry if I'm being naive, I just find it funny, funny's not the right word, odd that we're charging ourselves SDCs in the first place.
I'm going to have to take you back a little bit on the political, political part for me. It makes a lot of sense for the city not to charge SDCs, but I would never presume to make a decision that I would excuse the city from paying something that we require others unless the city council gave us the approval to do that.
Sure, and I understand that, but the taxpayers are paying for it anyway, so it would just seem-
That's the whole reason behind it. I, I did that once before with a, a project about the same size, where we just assumed that we would not pay the SDCs, and we got the tar beat out of us. And I realize how politically important that is, where we live by our own ordinances, unless the city council says there's a mechanism whereby you don't have to make that payment. And there is, in the case of SDCs. It is a deferral, which we have done for others.
And then, my next question is, the one source I don't see here as a possibility of tapping is our emergency fund, our rainy day fund. We're at $5 million?
You've got two components to that, Mayor. You have, the first component is the Rainy Day Fund, which is a little bit above $6 million.
Okay.
And that is money that can be used, but it's, if you recall, that's one that we had tried to set aside for a rainy day. This may very- This may very well be that rainy day. But the second is the contingency that we can use during this year for unexpected costs, and that's at two point two million dollars. And we have, we're proposing that we use seven hundred thousand dollars of that and bring it down to one point five million.
Because I know I'm going to have this discussion out in the community, is we've already paid this money and it's just sitting there. We understand emergencies happen, but we don't want to be taxed again to pay for something when we've got the money sitting there. And then, I do want to be sensitive to the fact that emergencies occur, and because of where we live, it could be a big emergency.
Ultimately, that becomes a policy choice for you as a council?
I think I'd be comfortable with a million out of that at this point, and then, next budget, if it's there, you know, we're still all standing, I'd be okay, you know, reimbursing that. Because we did agree as a budget committee and as a council to build that fund up.
Okay.
We will be discussing this, I assume?
Oh, for sure, yeah, yeah. And again, it's just an idea that it's money that's there. And I guess another thing, and I know this is a hot topic with some people, but we've got a big chunk of land up north that we've been saying, well, we can use it to, you know, take care of things down the road. This is another thing that's down the road, that can we sell off some of that land to pay for this? Again, citizens paid for that, it's their money. Can we find a way to tap into that without taxing again?
Okay. Are there other questions before I really get into what we're asking of you tonight? And then, we also have, Debbie's going to discuss the bond schedule. Okay, so what we're really asking of you tonight is to allow us to work towards an estimated cost of twelve million, four hundred and, I've got to go back to what it was, twelve million, twelve million, five hundred thousand dollars. We're not asking, we're not saying that's the guaranteed maximum price. I fully trust in the skill of the people that we've hired that our guaranteed maximum price would come in less than that. I'm not guaranteeing that, but I, these are very talented people, and we will push them towards that.
Exactly, right.
And we will push them towards that. And so, but, but in order for FFA to continue to go forward and to complete their design to get us to the next stage, they need to have a working number. And if that's still the ten point five million, that means a lot different building. If we can bring it in at the twelve point five million, then we will work towards that. And so, that's, that's what we're really asking of you tonight. All of the items for how to come up with the funding, we would be bringing those back to you for formal approval when, when we reach that appropriate time.
Do you mind going back on your list to the things that you have found as not do or do differently?
And while you're doing that, I have a question. Is this something we've been provided with before? Because none of this was in my packet.
No.
No, I did not include it.
And I would appreciate it.
And the reason for that is that without explanation, I don't know that it made a lot of sense.
Well, I would still like to be making my notes on it.
Me too.
As we go along. I have nothing to refer to later. So, if we could have that forwarded, that would be great.
Okay, where did you want to see, Councilor?
I was just reading the list, just to-
Well, let me quickly go through those and-
I've got a couple of sheets. Here. Nope, not this one. That's an old copy.
Thank you.
Share one for now.
Okay, thank you. They're going to share one.
This is where our experts are really going to have to help with this, because, so I'm going to go from the items that are underneath the yellow. These are all of the items that we have, that we have looked to either, to make cuts on. The first one is called the VE escalation reduction. You guys are going to have to explain that.
Yeah, so it's, we had a percentage of our budget to cover cost escalation between the time that design is happening and the time that construction is happening. As we're reducing, as we're including value engineering, so reducing the cost of the project, the amount that we need to cover escalation reduces. You want me to just keep going, Ron?
Yeah, if you would, and if you guys have any questions, please just jump in.
So, the casework reduction, typically, a lineal foot of casework is going to cost you about three to four hundred dollars. So, we made some assumptions, we could probably reduce X amount of square feet or lineal feet of casework to achieve about a sixteen thousand dollar savings. So, where that casework is actually coming from, we don't know yet. That's Ian's job. Ian will work with Chief Palmer and Ron and the team to kind of find the places that we can remove casework. But we had a conversation that we decided we could reduce the level of case, the level and quantity of casework.
I'm sorry, I don't know what case-
Cabinets, sorry. Cabinets and countertops. Yeah, sorry about that.
A question about that. That, well, that won't lose any quality.
Nope.
Okay.
Nope, it's just, it's just creating efficiencies and, you know, really diving into how much casework and cabinets are needed. But we're all in agreement on that one.
So, there's an original design that showed cabinets in different places, so we started taking a look at like, where can we start to pull back? So, we made some reasonable assumptions on what would, how we got to the number.
Yeah.
So, it wasn't just a wag, there was some, some science to it as well, like, yeah, we could probably remove this and still be okay programmatically with Chief Palmer in the room too, so that's how we went about that.
The next item that we discussed was deleting, we had some millwork or some finished woodwork at some high windows, so they had window sills kind of at a higher level. We discussed that maybe those weren't needed up there because of the elevation that the windows were at, so we deleted those. They would just be finished with drywall or some other type of sill, but not wood. The deletion of the three-inch rigid insulation at the SOG, which stands for slab on grade, that's your concrete floor at the bottom, that actually was deleted as a function of not having the radiant heat flooring. So, once you get rid of that, you don't need the three-inch, three inches of rigid insulation. Another option that we discussed was we have currently four overhead doors in the Sallyport, two in and two out. We discussed with Chief Palmer and Ron if we could just have one in and one out and remove the two overhead door, or two over, one overhead door at each end, excuse me. The, the next one is double-pane fiberglass windows, so that's in lieu of typical aluminum storefront, which can be cost prohibitive. So, we decided that we'd go with the double-pane fiberglass windows, same look essentially, same functionality, same solar performance, just not as expensive as the aluminum storefronts. You also had nine thousand dollars by deleting solar tubes. And what solar tubes are, are small, little, like, skylights essentially in your roof that has a tube that comes down and allows natural light to come into the building. I can't remember the quantity of those. It was ten, twelve of those that we had throughout the building.
So, how many are left?
Zero.
And that's, I'm not sure that's a good idea.
Ian, Ian can hear us? He can probably speak to-
Yeah, I can.
-the why behind the solar tubes not being necessary.
Yeah, let me sort of weigh in on that one in particular. So, the way that the building is laid out, we have a very narrow footprint to the building. So, overall width of the building is about sixty feet, and as we designed it, we placed core elements down the middle, which means that areas that don't really require much daylight or that are not being occupied on a regular basis are sort of in that middle zone, which what that does is it frees up the occupied areas where people are actually working to put them next to the windows. And so, they get lots of access to natural light. What we had done with the solar tubes was just as an energy efficiency measure, brought daylight down into those middle zones, so you didn't have to flip the light switches on as much. So, it wasn't sort of limiting daylighting where people are on a regular basis. It was just in storage rooms and bathrooms and things like that in that middle core zone, we were aiming for as much energy efficiency as we could. So, as a cost-saving measure, we felt reasonably comfortable with taking those out and really aiming our daylighting strategies where people are working on a day-to-day basis.
In addition, I'd add that most of the fixtures that they are LED, so they're highly, you know, economical. So, it's, you know, it's not like it's an energy hog now to, you know, eliminate those solar tubes.
Yep. The next item we discussed was deferring the cost of the white tack boards. These are just your marker boards.
I think you skipped over delete folding doors and delete two overhead doors.
Oh, I did, delete the folding doors. Actually, this was in one of the rooms we've, when we were having this discussion, Ian was like, this is easy because we've already deleted it. So, they've actually removed it and changed the design where that folding door isn't, isn't needed. Oh, I see, we have delete two overhead doors in there twice.
Different process.
Yeah, they are. Let me check my notes. I know that, I know the eighty-one hundred dollars is for the Sallyport doors. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it was, so the fifteen hundred, the fifteen hundred dollars is for just the painting of the two overhead doors. If you don't do the two overhead doors, then you don't have to paint them, and that was the fifteen hundred dollars. Defer the white tack boards I discussed. Reduce HDS by fifty percent. What HDS stands for is high-density storage. There are several locations in the facility that have high-density storage, file storage. Ian, you can jump in anytime, but my understanding is the, the design of the high-density storage was built for your current need and then future need. So, in discussions with the team, we just, we thought, let's just go with what your current need is. It still needs a little bit of study, but if we just go with your current need, make provisions for the future need, but don't actually buy and purchase and install the high-density storage, it would save you about thirty-three, thirty-four thousand dollars. Is that accurate?
Right, and just as a clarification, that, those high-density storages, what you, they may have some down in the library in your current building, but it's basically the rolling file cabinets that are on a track. And so, what we do as part of the design with this strategy is we put the track in, we put several of the, of the rolling bays of storage in, but we don't go out and buy all the bays that we need in the future. Those can be purchased over time as the evidence tech or the records staff need them. And the system as it is, is built to accommodate that kind of phasing over time.
The next item we discussed was deferring the window treatments, which are your blinds in the building. That would save an additional forty-five, forty-six thousand dollars.
Can you address what that means?
It's, it's either all of your window treatments at the exterior window, so your blinds, your Mecca shades.
There'd be no blinds in the building at all?
As of right now.
We swiped yours.
Still need one more down here.
Just one. It's not to say, just to add to that, Mayor, it's not, it's not to say we, you can't go down to Home Depot and put something on yourself, you know, just go get those kind of versions, just have something in the-
Well, I appreciate that, but when you say go get it yourself-
Well, you know what I mean, yeah, it's, this was an easy one for us to either defer it or, you know, find a way to have a kind of a value-based system on to get something in there, but to, you know, for forty-six thousand dollars to find some window treatments at a little bit more reasonable price that at least you have something. But this is something we talked about as a team, it was an easy one.
Okay, but the, and I'm not beating a dead horse, and Ron, do we have the staff who could do these things? They could install them? We go find the staff and we can install them ourselves?
Well, at a future date, you'd have to hire somebody to install them, yes.
Right, so, okay, but-
I used to do that, I can train them.
There you go. But I've worked in buildings where you don't have it, and it's pretty darn miserable.
Yeah.
And I just, the idea of that just doesn't seem-
It's not as complicated as it, it's not that.
Oh, no, I don't mean it's, I understand how easy it is to put these things in, but to just open a building without them and then say, well, we're going to put them in later, I just don't, but that makes no sense to me. Get it done, get it in, be done with it.
I would agree with that. If I could ask a question, so these are at all the exterior windows, which is what we were just talking about. We're not going to have the solar tubes, and so that, the solar tubes are where people aren't working. The windows are where people are working, and so it doesn't make sense to me that we don't have some kind of window treatment. I, I mean-
My, my thought is that we're not going to need window treatments until we have the fixtures, the FFNE. So, can the window treatments be added?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I think that's the approach, is that we were trying to pick off things to reduce the budget that are easy to install later on, that doesn't, you know, whether you do it today or later, excuse me, the infrastructure's there. Is if we just add about, you know, to, to Ron's point earlier, if we have money left over from savings, excuse me, we can go buy and add these back into the scope.
My concern is, is dispatch having, having the ability to see their screens. I know that without the window treatments now, they wouldn't be able to see their screens. But if we're not going to have people in the building, there's no need to have the window treatments in the building yet. It's my-
And my concern is this, we will all go out into the community and we'll be approached by folks asking for explanation of our decisions. And we'll say, oh, yeah, we, we cut two and a half million out of this, but we're going to pay for it next year. We didn't save a dime, and I just don't like that, I'm not going to call it bait and switch, but we're going to pay for it. And so, do we just say, we need it now, let's suck it up and let's pay for it? Or are we going to pretend that it doesn't exist and we're going to pay for it later? Now, I'm not a budget guy, so I understand money comes and goes each year, and it'll be there next year when it's not here this year. But I just, I'm feeling a little uncomfortable with, oh, we're going to, we're going to have it, and you're going to pay for it, but just not today.
Everything that you've seen on this can be added later or can be permanently deleted.
Right, I understand that. Like I said, we're going to be out there talking to the folks.
So, all of these are to target us, to get us to twelve and a half million dollars.
Right, I fully understand that. Yeah, jumping, just, just-
I was just going to say, maybe what the answer to that question is, it's going to cost what it's going to cost and-
Yeah, and what's it going to cost next year versus this year, too?
Well, we can have a full list of what it'll cost.
I'm just saying, prices don't go down. Prices never go down. So, our labor for this stuff's going to go up, the goods are going to go up.
I think the answer is that ten point five million's going to come from TRTs, and the rest of it's going to be found within the city's budget, so it's going to cost what it costs.
Exactly.
Even with these, some deletions and some do-it-laters.
Yeah, and then, there's things like, you know, when we talk about sills at high windows, we don't ever need those again. Fine, that's gone, I'm happy with that. And I did want to ask the chief about the, the reduction of the overhead doors from four to two. Can you talk about this a little bit and what that's going to do to you?
From my, from my point of view, and we had this discussion as this particular topic came, comes up, I would definitely prefer to keep the four-door system, partly for security, but partly if you reduce this to two doors and we are still intending to have the ability to park four, up to four vehicles in there at any given time, that means that there's going to have to be some type of jockeying around in there when they, when they park, which increases the opportunity for us to ding the building or ding our vehicles when we're in there. Sometimes, we have a run on car dings with my, my group from time to time on certain things. So, I get that this reduces our price, but it's probably, out of all of the things that are listed here, that's probably one of my top things that I would rather put back if we can. But I'd, you know, Ron and I discussed this at length, and, you know, we can make this work if that's where we land, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
And you don't, oh, we're just talking?
Yep.
Great. So, this is just for the building, correct?
This is total, twelve point five million is total cost.
To the land around it, the road improvements, the, any of that stuff? The backside, the, I mean, where are we at now as far as that?
We-
I'll tell you where I'm coming from. I don't think it's the right place at all. We had this idea of what it should be, and here we are, just deleting and deferring and deleting and deferring in a place that's in a slew, in my opinion. It doesn't look like it's very tsunami-safe, and it, and it's just, I just keep seeing this deletion and deferring and deletion and deferring, and, and we do have land in other places, and there are pinch points or choke points from, I don't know, what is that, Ninth, Ninth Street and South and Jettie, you know, and so you have this, that one-way in-
and Jettie, you know, and so you have this, that one-way-in. And to me, it just doesn't make sense at all. The building's great, there's a lot of work, and I don't want to take away from everybody's involvement in all of that stuff. But it just, over and over and over in my head, is this the right place, period? And I don't recall what the determination was, if it was a different property, if it was different land, what that difference would be.
I think I can answer that, and then I'll turn to our experts on this. So where we are coming into this is that you had said a $10.5 million budget.
Right.
Following the discussion you had of reducing the building in its size, it came at 13.5 million. All of the cuts...
With the knowledge that we were supposed to be at 10.5?
Yes.
So we reevaluated it, reduced it, and then really...
It's still at 13.5 million. All of the cuts that we're proposing now would bring it to 12.5 million.
Okay.
Okay. And then we, all of these things that you've been discussing bring us to 12.5 million. Then what I had discussed just a few minutes ago is where you come up with the extra $2 million. So now, so then the other answer to the question is, are we in the right place? I don't know. That ultimately becomes a question for you guys as, if you want to take the time to stop this and then start evaluating whether or not we should go somewhere else. And I will leave that up to Ian and David and Jaren to respond on what that actually means for the project.
So Ian, do you want to kind of start off, kind of what that would mean to you in terms of designing and kind of where you're at with things, and what that would mean to start and stop and do a due diligence study and all that?
Sure. So there's, there's two sort of things to answer here. One is just the site itself and its, its function for a new police station. And there are additional costs associated with the site that we're on. There's no looking at that any differently, mainly because of the slopes and things that we have. But I think that the building is signed in such a way that we've sort of nestled this building in in such a way that it really does work for the PD. The one comment that was made about, you know, having only one way in, we have been in conversation with the park design, with Genie and the landscape architects about providing a second way out of the back, and so that's in the concept designs for the Third Street Park. So from a functionality standpoint, we're comfortable with the site design as it is, and we think it's going to work for the PD now and in the future. Relative to what it would mean for us to go looking at other sites, we would put a pause on our current work, and then we would work with Ron and staff to identify parcels that are currently owned by the city or could potentially be acquired by the city over time. We would go look at each of those sites, evaluate their suitability from a series of criteria, and then hone in on one that makes sense, do test fits of the current program, and then select one. And at that point, the city would either have to already own it or go through the process of acquiring it. Now, what I would envision that process would take, just for the testing and review of that, would take several months. And then whatever process it would take to actually acquire it on your end, that's outside of my scope of understanding, but assuming a real estate process would take another couple of months. So at this point, I would turn to Jordan and say, based on a six-month delay in schedule, what that would mean relative to cost escalation.
So typically, right now, what we're seeing is about 6% a year in the increase in cost construction, and that's what we budget on most of our projects that are out of ways. And I, Ian, to your point, I mean, I think if we did shift gears, it would probably push us out nine to 12 months to the start of construction from where we're at right now.
Right. And understandably so. I mean, it takes time, but for me, it's just saying, this is the only place that we're going to look at when we do, you know, from the very beginning, you know, it was kind of like, "Yep, we're just going to do it here." And so then it's kind of like, well, but there are other places that, you know, aren't inches or feet away from the tsunami zone or need to be built on pilings and things like that that, you know. And so just from that point of view, it's like, and I understand we're this far deep into this process, you know, but that doesn't exempt us from saying, "Hey, wait a second, you know, wait a second." Yes, it's overdue, and yes, we better, and believe me, I want it to be fantastic and great for everybody there, I mean, period. But just from that, that other side of it is, hey, wait, just wait a second, you know. So, so that's really where I'm at as far as this whole thing. And it's just, just having to delete and defer, I mean, is a bummer. Do you know what I mean? Like, of course he's going to say he'll make it work, because where they're at, they're making it work, and they're doing their damnedest, period. I mean, of course, he's going to come to work and do a damned good job, no matter what we give him, no matter what it is, you know. But why does it have to be, "He'll work with it"? I don't like that feeling like that, you know. So just trying to say, "Hey, what else can we do before we, you know, do $10 million and another two and a half at the, you know, so..."
You know, let me just add to that. And the risk, too, is if we get down that road and we just don't find anything that works, you know, and then we're back to square one and we spent, you know, and Ian's time, and again, I completely understand what you're saying, absolutely, totally get it. And, but Ian, how much of that design time, you know, with your contract, how much would you have to redo? How much can you preserve in this form and function that you've created to date? You know, do you redo half of that work?
What we, what we could recycle from our current effort would be the programming stuff that we've done with the chief and his staff so far. Basically, though, we would start from scratch, beginning with schematic design, which would set us back to basically where we were in February.
Yeah, so you're, so looking at soft costs, that's, that could be another half a million bucks to start over?
If you didn't use the current design.
Yeah, right, exactly.
And I'm not saying anything about the building, I'm just saying the location. And I understand modifications would need to occur, you know, to occur to accommodate something else.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor? Chief, can I ask you a question about communications? Is, isn't it helpful or essential that the communication system remain as part of the, I mean, rather than, if we change your location, you'd have to change the entire communication system as well, or you'd be in two separate places as you make a transition? Should we move the location? Is it more convenient to remain there as for communication purposes, I guess is my question?
As a matter of convenience, yes. As a matter of technology and moving the technology, we're actually going to have to move out of the current building into the new building. And our communications piece is a whole nother project that we needed to engage in conversation here shortly. We've got that project ahead of us as well, but if we're going to, if we are going to make changes, this would be the time to do it as we progress with the communications piece that we need, need to do. But, but as far as moving the communication system, that's going to happen no matter what. It's just a question, are we moving it across an alley, or are we moving it across town to some other location? And then coming back to Councilor Hoagland's concern about other properties, I will say that Ron and I did take some time here a couple of months ago and did our best to look at what the city owns now, and we can't find any place that is going to create less of a terrain issue than what we are dealing with, with where we're at. So it kind of leaves us with what else is available commercially out there, and we'd have to go find a way to purchase that. But we did try to do our due diligence of looking at other locations that the city owns and couldn't come up with anything better at this point.
On 22nd, you guys didn't like that, by the skate park?
No, it's, it's actually worse than where we're at. It drops off, what'd we figure, around 100 feet into, into a ravine almost instantly there when you come off the top of that.
And then off of 25th Street? Or that other, I mean, I know there's not a road there.
Right.
Equally...
Right. It drops, it all drops down into that slough there. Yeah, we're facing the same type of terrain issues, only compounded in the, in the other sites, other three or four sites that we looked at.
The other point to bring up on those properties specifically mentioned is that we are currently working with developers to develop those as workforce housing properties.
I mean, right, but that doesn't mean that it's done, right? I mean, we're working towards it, and we still have to approve of those kinds of things. I understand, you know, I understand. Yeah, and then if we could just briefly address, and as briefly as you can, the consequences of abandoning that site, because I understood there were restrictions on its use.
There are restrictions. The property includes the police site, it includes the public works facility site, and then goes all the way to Third. It was a donation to the city. 19% of it can be developed with, and we are pretty close to that with this building. I think we're somewhere around 17% or 18%. We, we could sell a portion of that, of that if we had designated somewhere else to be, to remain as open property.
Is, I remember the reason why you didn't put it off of, I don't remember the reason why you don't put it off of, you know, the east that was like road. You didn't want to situate it closer to the road? Can you explain why again? Was there something there?
I guess I'm not familiar with which piece of property you're talking about.
Where the station is now, it was like an L shape or something? I don't know.
Oh.
Why isn't it moved farther south?
I'm going to have Ian answer that. Ian, where we had originally looked at putting the building was right across the street from the firehouse. Why didn't we go there?
Several reasons. One was that there was significant fill that we had to do to fill in that treat area there. It falls off fairly quickly. In addition, there was pretty significant security concerns because the city does not own the storage shelters down below the site, and that there was the risk that if someone wanted to do something untoward to the police and/or the building, that they could put something in one of those storage units, and the city would have no knowledge of it. And so the two biggest reasons were those. We're trying to get standoff distance to the building, primarily for security reasons.
So what's the distance between, across from the fire station and where it will currently be? What's the distance in linear feet?
Sorry, so the question is, what's the difference between the two sides?
No, what's the distance from the firehouse to the proposed building location?
I mean, if they're going to want to blow it up, they're going to want to blow it up, is the point.
Firehouse is here. Just, it's actually off.
It wasn't the concern about the proximity to the fire building per se. It was more proximity to the storage buildings that are down the hill.
I understand.
Across from, in the diagram that Ron has up now, where the public parking is, is where the previous design was proposed by the previous architect. And just downhill to the east of that is the storage units that the city does not control.
So what's the distance from the proposed, the first proposed building location and to where you're proposing to build it now? That distance to the storage shelters?
I would say that it's probably in the neighborhood of probably 80 to 90 feet. But it's also that the, in the current position, they're going to go 80, 90 feet away. In addition, it's a little more up slope from that, from those storage spaces. So it's got a little bit more distance.
And then what was the distance to the storage in the original?
Probably closer to 20 or 30 feet.
Okay, so we were still on our reductions?
The last one that you have on there, reduce the size of public parking and save on fill and replacement. I do believe, if I recall correctly, that is contained in this area of the, that's highlighted in yellow.
Correct.
I'm sorry, the item above that says defer SD system, and I don't know what an SD system.
Yeah, you're correct. We didn't touch on that one. So the SD system, it should say at police parking, that's your storm drainage system. So if we didn't install that parking lot back there where the existing building is, then those utilities would not be put in place.
And if I could ask a favor, and this is for everyone concerned, is, one thing that's always bugged me in life is when people talk shop, and I don't understand what the heck they're talking about, because these are public documents, people can ask for them and look at them, and there's no reference to what any of this means. And it would be so helpful if we could spend a little bit more on our data and type a couple more things to say, "Here's what this really means," or give us a legend.
That's a great point. However, Mayor, these are my notes from which I'm speaking off of. And so they're not, while they are public documents, they are not meant to be an email that we're giving out to people. So I'm just working from my notes, but point well taken.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
We mentioned maybe retaining the two overhead doors, I believe. As the chief mentioned, they were significant. I was just wondering if you would take serious consideration for the, keeping the solar tubes? I know you, Ian said they were in places where it was dark and not always lighting, but these are buildings, this building's going to be there for 30 years. And I myself have worked in buildings where the dark places don't have light, and it just impacts you psychologically. These solar tubes can elevate people's mood throughout the building, and I think maybe you want to give consideration to that. I'm not objecting to it. Me, too.
I've also seen the difference between aluminum windows and fiberglass, and fiberglass doesn't necessarily hold up that great here, and they do deteriorate, and it is difficult to have them replaced. And so, I mean, if we're going to go back and forth between what is or isn't good, I mean, aluminum will last that. Those fiberglass windows, I guarantee you, will not last 30 years, period, period. So, you know, I don't, I don't agree with taking those out either. So if we're going to talk about that. I don't know. It's a lot, it's, it's just so much, and it's not working over and over and over again.
Any other questions?
I just have a question about the defer white tack board. Is that the white boards you write on?
Marker boards, yes.
And so you're saying defer that to when the FFE? So what's the FFE at now, then?
No, that is not a part of the FFE. This would be separate, so it would be deferred to an unknown date.
So like, just poof, you have a present for the chief?
It would be something that he would eventually have to work into his budget.
But wouldn't he use, I mean, what was the purpose of these boards, then, if they aren't so necessary now?
It's not that they're not necessary. It's that it becomes a matter of balancing how much you have to spend with what is, and just like we do in our budget, it's a comparison against other things. And so it's not that they're not important. The question becomes, are they as important as something else?
In answer to your question, the white boards and tack boards would be used in critical places like in Dispatch. We anticipated one wall with ability to slide some back and forth so they can keep track of everything from warrants to what's going on during the day. I assume this would probably also impact the community room, which would act also as our EOC, to have the availability of that type of space to post what's going on and emergency events and that sort of stuff, so.
Okay, so you're okay with deferring it, then? You can get some...
Yeah, we will eventually find a way to get those in the building, but...
What would be, what square footage would it take for the building to cost totally, with everything that's on here, to be $10.5 million?
We did that calculation, didn't we?
We did. It's a reduction of about 4,000 to 5,000 square feet, so you're looking at 13,000 to 14,000 square feet.
And what's the current at right now?
18.
What is the current police station at right now? And it would be reduced to what, how many?
13,000 to 14,000.
To be 10.5 million?
Correct.
And we're at 8,000? And we're at eight thousand? And, 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 other than the numbers, did you figure what would be reduced? Other than the square footage?
As far as programming?
Like layout and all that stuff?
No, we do not.
Could that be something that, I mean, could it be looked at? To see what would it take to build a, what would a fourteen thousand square foot building be?
If you would like to, yes, we could do that.
If we're, I mean, with...
Really big undertaking to reprogram everything, to figure out what's, there's a ton of work that goes into figuring out his needs.
Was it two and a half million dollars?
Well, the effort probably, you know, again, back to...
Because that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, some of the, that would cause us to pause and probably do a six, six-month delay. Ian, I get, this is probably a question also to you, to reprogram everything to fit into a thirteen thousand square foot building?
No, thirteen, fourteen.
Sure, I mean, I think that, you know, David's right in terms of the sort of time delay and the money delay, not delay, but the money impacts, no, of course, they're not two million dollars, but they're probably in the neighborhood of eighty to ninety thousand dollars, and then in addition to that, you know, the move that we made to go from twenty-four thousand to eighteen thousand, that was a pretty big hit right out of the gate, and we looked at sort of every nook and cranny relative to the spaces that we have in the building, to make sure that what we're providing gets the PD comfortable for today, and gives them room over the thirty-year planning horizon that we have. So, if we go from the eighteen that we have to the fourteen thousand, we're basically cutting the future out of the building. So, I think that's something to keep in mind, and not only just the future, but we're gonna start cutting into just straight functionality out of the gate.
I mean, I understand...
Yes, we can do that exercise, and we can undertake that, but in my own experience, that's what we're gonna lose in the equation.
Okay, thank you. You know, it's, it's, it's a building, and could be built on if needed, right? Ultimately. Right? If there, if in ten years, fifteen years, we said, oh, man, you're right, fourteen thousand isn't enough, and now we need another, however, ten thousand, that could be done in the future. I mean, I know we're trying to foresee what it would take for the next thirty years, you know, so...
I was gonna add, just a comment on that, too. If you, to, to build a thirteen thousand square foot building for future flexibility and add an expansion, say, you know, five thousand square feet, or whatever it might be, the cost of doing that would be way more than just spending the money today on the two million dollars.
The future construction.
Yeah, so, and you'd sacrifice a lot of program, I don't think you'd have the police station that you really need to start over and try to get it to fit into fourteen thousand square feet. Just from my experience of listening to the program, the way it's been developed to date, I think you're sized appropriately for the chief's needs and your needs to start over and do that. I don't think that's gonna, I wouldn't advise you to do that. I would advise you to stay with, try to figure out how to get the money, and to do this project where you are right now.
Counselor Hinton had a question.
I was just, I was just gonna say, I'm comfortable with the size that you have designed it to now, there was a lot of work done to make sure that that was the location that would work for the police programs that are there, and they really cut a lot out from the beginning. I mean, we've, we've talked about this, we've talked about location before, we've had the discussion of what properties we own, and we, and we settled on them staying where they are, and we've talked about the square footage, and we've talked about a lot of elements. I think this is the first time that we've had an actual, like, list of what item, particular items cost, where we can actually defer things, or delete them, or whatever, but I'm pretty comfortable with the, with the location, given the work that they've done so far, and the timeframe, and the money that we would lose by starting over, and the size of the building, so.
I would agree with that. I'm comfortable with what we've heard, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this to date. My concern is, again, just how we fund it, and I'm not sure I'm ready to make a motion at this point to tap the rainy day fund, or whatever the actual words are for that thing, but that seems to me a source of money that would be readily available, is not entirely necessarily needed right now, and could be replenished with the next budget cycle.
So, Mr. Mayor, I've heard four things that you've talked about adding back into it that we have proposed to cut. Maintaining the overhead doors, keeping the solar tubes, keeping the double pane fiberglass windows, and doing the window treatments. That total comes up to ninety-five thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars. Now...
Did you include the fifteen hundred for painting the doors?
I did, I got two of them, the fifteen hundred plus eighty-one seventy, I combined them both. So, that's ninety-five thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars. What we're really asking of you tonight is...
There's also, hey, Ron, real quick to interrupt, there's some proportional other expenses just by percentages as that, those increase, the other values blow, so...
What I, what we're asking of you tonight is to establish a new budget, and, and then Debbie and I will come back with the necessary resolutions and documentation as to where the funding will come from those. It's, it's easy for me to figure out where they're going to be, because they're not gonna be much different than what we've proposed, it's gonna be just a matter of how much. And so, so for example, we are, we are, we would be proposing to defer a portion of the cost of that, of that, so this is the amount that would be above the debt amount, above the ten and a half million dollars. We would be proposing to defer the FFNE costs until next budget year, and then we would budget that cost into next budget year. We would be proposing to use an amount from the general fund, fund balance. We would be proposing to use an amount from the capital fund, fund balance, or the facilities capital fund. So, I am, I'm looking right here, okay? The numbers are not as important as, as what we're doing, because just based on our discussions, those could change. We would be proposing to request that you defer the SDC charges, and we would be proposing that you waive the administrative fees for the city's permit cost.
Why would we not just waive the SDCs?
We only allow deferring of SDC charges, according to our ordinances.
Okay, since we make the ordinances...
You'd have to change the ordinance. You can't break your own ordinance, you'd have to change it.
No, I understand that, but I also know that we can change them.
You can change your ordinance.
It just seems silly to me to pay these things, when taxpayers have already paid for it.
That's a very good point.
Isn't it just putting it five dollars in this pocket to that pocket, ultimately? What, what's the problem with paying it?
Well, there's, there's two parts to it. Yes, in a sense, it is taking from one pocket and putting to another, however, as we've discussed in our budget meetings, the, the, the funds are meant to be self-setting, self-balancing sets of accounts, and so, if the general fund, where this is coming from, is not paying the sewer and the water fund, then the sewer and water fund is going to have to make up that money, okay? Where it would not have to otherwise. So, so in one sense it is, in the other sense it's not. Then the other part, which is just as important, is that you require this of other, of other developers in the city. You require them to pay that, or to receive a deferral of their SDC charges. You should follow the same process that you require of others.
No.
I would say, I would say yes, we should follow our own rules. I disagree.
I think so, too.
Totally different entity.
Completely disagree with you.
Totally different. For me, it would be an ordinance to give the council, to, the authority to waive it when they felt it was necessary. That would be what, that's what I'd be interested in, because I'm willing to stand up and take the hits from somebody and say, look, here's why I voted this way, but I don't even have that option now.
SDC fees, the, the theory behind them is all about fair share, in that everyone's paying the impact that they have to the cost of the infrastructure, and if you start waiving this one, and that one, and that one, then that cost becomes unfair, in that you've got other, you know, these entities paying for this entity.
I disagree, because they've already paid for it. Why, it, it's, it's public money, public building, it's not, to me, it doesn't make sense, it's not a private party that's getting a benefit from it, it's the people who've already paid for it, are getting the benefit.
They're not out any money. And the initial cost of the thing, sure, but it's not gonna...
You can't charge a private person SDC fees for the impact that you have on, on the capital infrastructure. It's, you have to make up for it some other way.
Mr. Mayor? Let us take a look at that in more depth.
Appreciate it. I'm still beating this horse, hang on a minute.
No, no, Richard just brought up something that I think is critical, but I need to talk more in detail with him. It always, it's very helpful to ask your lawyer when you're talking about ordinances, so let me bring something back to you.
Appreciate it.
So, based upon what I have heard tonight, what we would be requesting of you is to establish a budget, I'm gonna just round it up to give us a little bit of room, and that would be twelve million... Twelve million, six hundred thousand dollars is the new budget. It would then become incumbent upon the staff and our consultants to design a building to that budget, at ninety to ninety-five percent of the architectural drawings being completed, we would then receive a guaranteed maximum price that would actually establish the price of the building. In between that time, Debbie and I will come back to you with a proposal that would be very similar to what we have here. We'll tweak it based upon what we've heard you say tonight, but it would be very similar to what we have here, wherein we would show how we would come up with the, the extra two, two point two million dollars. So, and then in essence, the bottom line of this is that ten and a half million dollars would be paid by debt, and the debt would be repaid through the transient room tax, through the facilities capital fund. Two point two million dollars approximately would be paid through other funds, which would primarily be general fund monies.
Which will not just renew? Like, you know, like the mayor was talking about, those funds will renew themselves, they will not be renewed, that, that two point two unbonded assessment, it's not gonna just go back to two point two, right? If we were to take that seven hundred thousand out, it would now then be one point five, just so that I'm clear.
Yes, yes, sir, that is correct.
It's not gonna go back up at any point.
It, it could go back up if revenues exceeded expenditures at the end of the year.
Which we've been spending.
Yeah, it could, there is the possibility, but there's no guarantee it would go back to, to the, to the higher amount.
Just so that it's, you know, same page.
Yes, sir.
And before we finish up here, I have a couple of questions for the chief. Sorry about that.
No worries.
I'm gonna give you some wheels. With the changes that we've just made, adding the overhead, two more doors back into the, into the design, and changing the, I think Riley was on to, Riley was on to something about the windows, I, the fiberglass, I can't imagine that holding up in our environment, salt, air, water, I just can't imagine. Anyways, and the solar tubes and the window treatments, with those changes, does this seem like, I'm looking for your full honesty here, does this...
Ron, cover your ears, Ron.
Don't look at, don't look at the manager.
Full honesty is, is that we would love to have a building that didn't have to go through this scenario to get to where we need to go, but we also understand how we have to be fiscally responsible to the community that we're in, and, and do this in whatever stages it, we can manage it and get it there, but ultimately, we want a building that serves its function for us well inside, serves the public well, and, and one the community and our team can be proud of. And I think we can still get there in these phases, rather than going out all at once, if, if that's what you folks choose to do, and that's how we need to budget it. Ideally, I would love to just get it done, so...
Now you know why we promoted him, he is really good with that.
I have two more short things. One is, I'll be checking on you about your whiteboards, and then two, I'm worried about the parking. I don't like the idea of having to have a family member have to drop off a police officer or dispatch, or I just, so, is there, I guess this might be a question for Ian, is there anything, any other parking spaces we can gather from that area?
Well, before Ian jumps in, I just, you know, we'll be kind of experimenting with this as construction starts, because obviously, all that parking isn't gonna be there to begin with anyway. We're going to have to make some adaptations on how we're managing vehicles just in the interim for construction. That may open up some avenues for us to have better ideas on how we're gonna manage this once the building is, is up, but whether or not there's a better way to do it yet, I'm counting on Ian and Jordan and these guys to help us figure out.
Is the, is the parking lot itself, the, the way in which it's built up for differences? You know, does it, does it have to be asphalt, it can be semi-pervious, or what, I mean, what, I mean, it's a wetland back there, and so, you, you know, trying to be, you know, conscious of that, and is that the only thing that we can do? I mean, I know it's not the only thing that we can do, but has there been that?
Study on other types of material to create the same parking? Well, that's something we're discussing now with Ian's team, based on the idea of leaving that building in place, what can we do to create a kind of a temporary provision for the chief and the, you know, patrol vehicles and their personal vehicles and the backside of that? So, I think that's a question also for Ian, Ian's team, if there's a different, you know, cost savings type of material. Generally speaking, asphalt is the, the most cost-effective solution. When you start introducing impervious solutions, it's actually more costly.
Is, you know, and like where they park their personal cars can be, you know, gravelled, or in the, you know, where the cop cars be, you know, there's, you guys are talking about it, that's all.
Right.
Quick question, have we ever had a fuel depot there, fuel storage? We have to worry about that, and the EPA, and the whole gig?
We don't have any fuel storage on-site for the police department, but I would go back to the original question Counselor Hoagland asked about why we moved the vehicle, or the building back from that original position across from the fire department, is we have that additional concern of Carson's Fuel Depot being adjacent to that piece of property. But we don't, we don't have any fuel storage on-site, other than for our generator.
Okay, and then, the furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, talking about deferring that, I haven't looked at the Consumer Price Index and what our inflation rate is, what, what can we expect prices to go up as a percentage? Are we looking at three percent next year, and five?
You're talking about for furniture and equipment?
Yeah.
I think that's just a general good number, I mean, what we, the industry uses, you know, the construction industry uses a half, half percent to three quarters of a percent per month, as a kind of a rule of thumb.
So, we're gonna pay three to five percent more for these by deferring it?
Right. So, you know, furniture kind of escalates a little bit differently than construction materials, so, and equipment, too, is kind of, it's on its own.
Who does the shopping for that? Who's, who's gonna be in charge of purchasing furniture? No, you're not, you're not gonna sit there, what are you gonna do, Amazon, and...
Yeah, Amazon Prime was just a couple days ago, so we missed on that.
How do you shop for that?
Right now, the plan is, is that we will be meeting, a group of us will be meeting with Ian's interior design person, we'll go to Portland and evaluate different interior layouts and, and furniture options. We will pick a number of those critical need items, and actually have some of them shipped down to the PD prior to making the major person to test out. No, but, you know, members of our department that will be looking at their various areas in conjunction with Ian's team will, will make these decisions.
All right, and then this one is just totally left field, but it occurred to me to ask the question. I've talked to many contractors in this town who said they would give their left arm for a, a building trades program in this town, to get the kids back involved. Is there any way to start talking about a trades program in conjunction with this, some kind of, what's the word I'm looking for, apprenticeship, something to bring them into this?
Yeah, it's definitely something we can, we can look into.
That would be terrific.
Yeah, I will talk to our general superintendent.
All right, so, and then just back to the, what we all apparently agreed on, I don't agree on the solar tubes, I don't think they're necessary based... agree on the solar tubes, I don't think they're necessary based on what I heard, and I don't agree on deferring the furnitures, fixtures, and equipment.
On which one did you say, on the second point?
The solar tubes and the deferring on the FFE.
Oh, okay.
I just assumed, pay for it and get it over with.
Right.
We got a big pile of money sitting there, we just need to grab it. But we didn't have it, we didn't have it for so many years, and we just keep bumping it up and bumping it up, and it's like, yeah, it's like, okay, we need it, we need that money, and let's, let's-
So I understand.
Yeah.
Did you see?
There you go, Dan.
It's a big pile of money, guys, Dr. Spurges over there, just diving in gold coins.
Well, 6 million is a big pile of money.
It's not, it's not all for grabs.
I know.
It's nice to not be in the same situation that a lot of others do.
I absolutely understand that, and, and I believe that, and I, trust me, I'm cognizant of our economic situation, and I'm not saying it lightly, even though it might sound like it. But again, it's money that belongs to the taxpayers, it's there, it's sitting there, and to ask them to pay again on something that's just sitting there does not seem right to me. Use what they've paid judiciously.
That's a fair point. Now, with, now with all of the recommendations that we've, we've heard, again, we will be bringing that information back to you. What we're really shooting for tonight is just to establish a new budget, to, so these guys can design to a budget, and from everything I've heard at this point, it would be 12.6 million dollars, unless we were to add back in the FFE, which would take it to about 13 point-
No, it's 12.
Oh, yes, it would include it, we just have to figure out where it comes at, the timing of the payment, thank you. So, so-
Well, one thing we haven't talked about, unless I missed it when I stepped out of the room, is the, the sources of revenue to cover the deferred FFE. Have we discussed each one of those and whether we prefer those things to be?
Those, all you've seen in that one are just examples of one-time payments, the one-time expenditures for this year. Those expenditures won't be there next year, because they, we will have already spent the money.
But I don't want to even compromise on the centrifuge.
We're not, no, we're not, we're not asking for any cuts in those, those are just to identify. They were to help me look at it and say, do we have enough one-time expenditures in this year's budget that we would be able to cover that kind of a cost next year?
And I have a question. Okay, so if we don't defer the FFE, will we have a building or a place to put all these chairs and desks, and, I mean, are we gonna pay for storage to put them somewhere before we need them? Maybe it's not such a bad thing.
Well, that's what the hospital was talking about.
Yeah, you would generally, you know, if, if you don't defer that, that would, we procure those in the normal sequence of time to get those on, delivered, some, some of our 16-week lead time, or 12-week lead time to buy certain furniture that the chief was just talking about. So, and that process should really start here immediately, and FFA's team is working on this right now, that we start the selection process over the next few months, and then procurement process should naturally happen within, at a reasonable time after that. If we defer it, we just can't place those purchase orders until later, so you wouldn't be getting the furniture necessarily on time. Some of the equipment would, may not be on time, if you have to wait.
So if you would like, what we can do, again, it doesn't change the budget amount, but what we can do is Debbie and I come back with some plans, we can include in that plan if we do defer it and if we don't defer it, and what that actually means. So that's not necessarily a decision you have to make tonight. We would be starting to bring these back to you on your first meeting in August.
Okay.
Are you ready for a motion?
Motion away.
I move to establish a new budget for the police building at 12.6 million dollars. Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, will call?
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
Walke.
Yes.
And Williams.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right.
The other thing that we had tonight is that I wanted Debbie to just briefly go through the timeline for the, the bonding, and she, we put a sheet on your desk, there is one correct, there is one mistake on that that I noticed before I put it out there. It gives the impression that this is a general obligation bond. It is not, it's a revenue bond.
We can't hear you, Debbie.
You can't do a full faith and credit of the city type of bond without doing a, a general obligation bond, so there's slightly different terms.
Before you begin, just so I can put this away, Ron, on your notes, under dispatch 22,000, it says stansel 911. I don't know what that means.
Chief, do you want to explain what a stansel is?
Yeah, actually, our stansel is our 911 recorder, that records all of our radio and telephone communications, okay? And that will have to be transferred, and in actuality, we ended up having to replace that prematurely a couple of months ago, so we have the, the new system in place, and that will move out of our building into the new building.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, go, go ahead.
So I think you all have a copy of the timeline for issuing the bond, it's about a three-month timeline, and if we're breaking ground in November, we kind of set that as, as a starting point to have our, our bond proceeds by mid-November, and from there you work backwards. So, a couple of key points, in, in September, we would be bringing to city council a resolution and ordinances authorizing us to proceed with a bond, and just a lot of individual tasks on here, but we would have a kickoff meeting end of August and have proceeds by mid-November.
You need anything from us to say okay on that? You're good to go?
No, this is, this is our current plan and kind of advising, and if you have questions on any of the individual line items, I can find out for you.
It's a nice display.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, our DA Davidson did that for, for me, yeah.
Anyone else for the good of the, okay, and since we did announce the public input section, anyone in the audience care to comment on anything? Seeing none, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we are adjourned. Okay, Ian, we're on that. Oh, and I'm sorry, thank you all for coming, that was very rude, I apologize. I'm gonna go swim in that pile of money now, Riley.
What?
I'm gonna go swim in that pile of money.
[laughing]